I'd like to reconvene in the meeting from August 1st, 2023. Ms. Steele, will you pull the board?
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Frisco?
Here.
Mr. Hedrick?
Here.
Mr. Bazan?
Here.
All present.
When Ms. Cronin tried to do the agenda for tonight's meeting, we were trying to figure out the best way to do it because so much of it was done prior. So to make life easier, we're going to start with item 11G. We couldn't mark it out, so that's where we are. Well, so that's where we're going to go, but we'll start with Citizen Comment Period. If anybody would like to come up and talk, please state your name and magisterial district, and you have three minutes to speak.
If I may?
Yes.
Are we not doing matters presented by the board tonight? I'd like to do one thing we can.
We can?
It's okay.
Is it, do you want it before or after?
Before.
Okay, well, let's do Citizen, let's do Citizen Comment Period, then we'll go back to matters presented by the board. So come on up, state your name, magisterial district, and you have three minutes.
I'm Catherine Carter from the Abingdon District, and I'm here. I need to pass these around. First page is the excerpts from the Virginia Bill of Rights. Then right after that is a petition. The VAMFA, the Virginia for Medical Freedom Association, has sent to Jason Yares, the Attorney General concerning smart meters. And in that petition, it's a list of federal constitution violations of rights, of which privacy is, and the dangers to health. The Bill of Rights is first because it prefix every constitution. It was number one, it was the first constitution of Virginia. It prefix every constitution until 1901, when it was included as Article One in the Bill of Rights. And also, if you look on the backside of the articles, you will see Article Nine. It says, "By what authority does a power company operate?" Under Article Nine, corporation. And there is a question in my mind about the legitimacy of Article Nine. And this is the reason. It says, "A legislator shall elect the members of the corporation commissioned." But also, it blurs some language in border zone color of law, 18 U.S. Code 247. Members of the commission shall be elected by the General Assembly and shall serve for regular terms of six years. At least one member of the commission. Now, this is where it really gets blurry because you're talking about a legislative branch. And we have three separate branches. And yet, listen to this description. "At least one member of the commission shall have the qualifications prescribed for judges of courts of record." That is the judicial system being blended in here with the legislative. And any commissioner may be impeached or removed in the manner provided for the impeachment or removal of judges of courts of record. And my guess, my question is, who would have the qualifications of a judge of a court of record if they aren't going to appoint someone to come over and operate in a different division? So, you know, I have a lot of questions about the authority that Dominion Power Company has with these smart meters. They constitute an invasion of privacy. It's kind of like the voting machines. Whatever can come in the back door through Wi-Fi, what will be going out from people's houses into the power company? Because they will be able to determine, are you using too much Wi-Fi? Are you, where are you on the Wi-Fi? I could see how that could be an extreme invasion, even going into religious violations of religious freedom, which one thing would be. Okay, times up. Yeah, because they have the right to privacy of contract. But if someone could invade your home through AI, you don't have any privacy. That's my point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry. Let me make sure I read this. Am I right?
Yes, sir, you just give your name and your magisterial district first.
Excellent. Carlos Morales, I'm with the Abingdon District. I am also the founder of Gloucester Pickleball Club. But tonight, I don't even want to talk about Gloucester Pickleball Club. I want to talk about one word that every time you think about making decisions for Gloucester County, I would like to you to think about that word, progress. The decisions you make for this county are these decisions that deal with progress in our county. Progress, I know, is not free. If you want to have an addition or build an addition to your house, you're not going to do that for free. Any upgrades, any improvements, not free. So yes, I understand that progress costs. And I just know that pickleball is just a small part of that progress. I know that, you know, the voting for referendums to come out for November for the community to look at, I'm all for it. If it costs me a penny, two pennies, or a dollar, whatever it is, because it's progress. And I know it's not free. I know it's not easy, but I want better for this community as well. I went out of town, out of state for 10 years, I came back. I'm here. My wife is here, my kids are here, my grandbaby's here, and I want progress. If it means that the parks get renovated, they get upgraded, fire stations get upgraded, and if it costs, it costs. That's part of life. We can't wait five, 10 years to see what the economy is going to do to see if we're going to make progress. So just for tonight, I just want you to think about that word, and I know it's not free. I know that a lot of people in this community are for progress. And even if it costs them tax dollars, so be it. Because what we want, better for this community. And so I just ask you to think about that. I'm holding pickleball events not here because I have no pickleball courts. I just held one at Veterans Park in Williamsburg. I'm holding one, another one in Kilcreet and New Per News. You know why? Because they got pickleball courts. Matthews is putting pickleball courts. Delta Ville's already got it, New Kent, Williamsburg, York County just put six in. So I'm just asking you, as you're making decisions, pickleball is a small portion of it, but it can also bring community, it can also bring health. I've got people from little kids to 80-year-olds playing the sport. And I think it's a great thing for this community as we're progressing, hopefully, in 2023 and up. Not trying to be stuck in 1959 or 1969. So again, the word I just asked you to think about is progress as you're making decisions for our county, our children, and our grandchildren, and your children, and your grandchildren. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Morales.
Good evening. I am Bill Enders. I reside in Hayes, Virginia with my wife Gina. I have been playing pickleball for about two years now. What I would like to leave you with this evening is that this game brings together people. I play with doctors, I play with lawyers, I play with 87-year-olds, I play with 84-year-olds. It brings together people. That is something that we desperately need in this county. Last December, I was down in Lima, Peru with my wife on vacation. I was able to hunt down the local pickleball community via Facebook. I wound up out on the Pacific Ocean with Mr. Carlos Cuba, got out there on the courts, and ran into Kaylee and her husband from Fairfax, Virginia. Imagine that. This game brings together people. Put it on a referendum and let the taxpayers in Gloucester County decide. Go out there on the web and look at the economic benefit that it brings to the world. I mean billions. It's in the billions. So I would ask that you put it on a referendum, let us decide. And if you need any other information, meet me out there on the courts. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Billy Moore, and I'm in the Ware District. Also, I worked for Parks and Recreation for 38 years doing athletics, and Carol probably thinks it seemed like more like 78 years, but anyway. So I got introduced to pickleball by a man named Gary O'Neil a couple, right, right before, the day before the world shut down for the pandemic and fell in love with the sport. Been hearing about it. I know Carol had talked to me before I retired, we had talked about getting pickleball going, but we were just getting into starting that. I taught three beginning classes of pickleball for Parks and Rec. We had 30 people. 25 of those people are still playing pickleball. So pickleball is, it's not a fad sport. In my career, we dealt with many fad sports. I know Carol knows that. We had all sorts of sports. We tried to help the people with their sports, but you knew it was a sport that was going to either be small or it was going to go away. That's not pickleball. It's the fastest-growing thing, activity in the entire country, maybe the world, and definitely in Gloucester County. It is growing leaps and bounds. It's on TV now. You see professional pickleball. It's on TV. It's been on prime time. The ratings were good. You're going to see more and more of it. It's going to be a major sport. All ages can play. We play at Newton Baptist Church. We have three indoor courts. We have to pay for those to rent them. There are some nights that we have 35 people playing. Carlos has expanded our hours so we can spread that out. So some nights, there's 45, 50 different people that come up there to play pickleball. You play a game, you wait two games. It's how popular it is. A lot of people aren't coming as much because it's so crowded. If we build eight courts in this county, they will be used. If you ride around Delta Ville, go to Williamsburg, for goodness sakes, go to Virginia Beach. My son played for his first time the other day. Went to a place that had 18 courts. All 18 courts were being used. This wasn't even prime time. Parks and Rec, if they ran it, they could have leagues, they could have tournaments, open play. And where there's pickleball, the businesses won't be hurt. People love to go eat and shop after playing a couple hours of pickleball, or go buy more knee braces, whatever the case may be. When people go on vacation, the gentleman mentioned what he's going on vacation. I talk to people all the time, "Oh yeah, we found a pickleball court near where we're going to be on vacation." So it's just, it's grown. If we build the courts in Gloucester County now, 10 years from now, you're going to look back and you're going to say, "This was a great move." Our community will benefit from it. It does bring people together. We have people playing at the church from age 14 into their 70s. Carlos had a tournament a couple weeks ago. Me and my partner in our 60s, we played two people who are 24 years old. They kicked our butt, but we played. But it's sports for everyone. It started out, it was introduced as a sport for kids, and then it became a senior sport. Now, now it's for everyone. You have young people. The schools are talking, and I think they will quickly put it into their PE curriculum and maybe become a high school sport before too long. It's growing that fast. So I urge you, you guys, not to think about it. I know it costs money, but we'd appreciate your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
My name is Diane Jones. I'm in the Ware District. On a personal note about the smart meters. I recently had heart surgery and went into atrial fib. And so as I progress in my antiquity, it's a possibility that I could have a pacemaker. And there has been evidence of interference with smart meters and pacemakers. And I have several friends who already have pacemakers, who I would be reticent to have visit if I had a smart meter. Also, I have sent in the opt-out paperwork, and I hope that's not an issue. I don't know anything about pickleball, except that when I played it at my daughter's house, my six-year-old grandson got a lot of exercise chasing my ball.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Good evening. My name is Susan Austin. I'm from the York District. And I'm here to talk about microwave radiation. The reason I am doing this is because Dominion Power is installing smart meters, and there's not much choice in the matter, even though they say you can opt out. If you have solar power, you cannot opt out. I don't know how many people know that. I have solar. I had solar before Dominion came around and added me to their smart meter list. It's called network monitoring or something like that. And so they said, "I cannot opt out. I have to be subject to this excessive radiation that comes into my home." I don't like it. I'm going to fight it. I have contacted my representative in Congress. Not that he can do anything or will do anything, but I'm letting him know. And I just want to read a couple little things. All of the G's, the four G's, the five G's, the six G's, and beyond are marketing terms. The real agent they're marketing is microwave radiation. We cannot see it, but radio frequency microwave radiation is a hazardous xenobiotic foreign-to-life agent, and it is harmful environmental pollution, kills bees. Wireless radiation has biological effects. No longer a debate. Look at PubMed and peer-reviewed literature. These effects are seen in all life forms, plants, animals, insects, microbes. In humans, we have clear evidence of cancer, DNA damage, cardiomyopathy. That's a precursor of congestive heart failure. And this is from Dr. Sharon Goldberg. She says, "The way you create a model for diabetes in rats in the lab is by exposing them to 2.4 gigahertz." I think that's less than they put on us. Let's see. "I called Dominion and requested that my smart meter be removed. They have an opt-out meter, but due to my investment in solar, they refused to consider my request, and they just refused. So I don't have that option." But something to think about. "In view of the catastrophic fires in Lahaina on Maui, Hawaii, anyone should be questioning the danger of smart meters catching fire." There have been many instances of these fires. There are websites. You can go to more information. And there is a lot of information on smartmeterharm-files.wordpress.com. Kathy Greer lives in Boulder, California. She is a direct recipient of this smart meter fires through her wiring. I know that Dominion makes donations to lots of counties. And I want to caution you about hiding behind that because all of you are affected by this. It's not just a few of us constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Would anyone else like to speak during the Citizen Comment Period? Last call. Would anyone else like to speak during the Citizen Comment Period? Okay. Oh, that's right. We've got three tonight. Excuse me, Ms.
Tyler.
First one is from Doug Williams at 5489 Cranston Creek Drive. Says that, "I oppose the spending referendum that you and the majority of the Gloucester Board of Supervisors are proposing. I urge you to cut the spending until such time as the economy is more prosperous and stable. The improvements relating to the fire department are the only expenditures I endorse at this time." Joseph Gondreus from Abingdon. "Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on the board's proposal of raising property taxes for capital improvement projects. In consideration of the recent property assessment, I am highly opposed to this tax increase. My property was reassessed last fall at an increase of 40%. Obviously, the equalization of the tax rate came nowhere near to equalizing the bottom line of my property taxes. So in essence, my property taxes have already been increased significantly. As I'm sure you will hear from other citizens, the consistent attacks on my finances from across all areas of the government and economy are not sustainable. It appears to be non-ending with no regard to the financial well-being of the citizens under this financial attack, i.e. taxes, insurance, groceries, fuel, energy, commodities, et cetera. And in no way is my financial income keeping any kind of pace with the increased financial demand coming at me. I am in agreement with the need for some of the capital improvement in question. However, I am also aware of government spending and how it is often done recklessly. I am in full belief that the funds are there, and if spent on requirements that are programmed, designed, and awarded responsibly, can be funded. Hard decisions need to be made by this board to fund required budget items versus items that are nice to have. I make sacrifices every month, now more than ever, to fund my requirements at home, and am now more than ever having to forego niceties to afford necessities. We're entering a time where families no longer work hard to obtain nice things for themselves but in order to survive. Finally, I would ask the board that if it should deem it necessary to raise taxes, to look for other avenues than constantly hitting the homeowners for funds. Taxes benefit all citizens of the county, and I'm pretty confident a large portion are not contributing. Our school budget is probably the largest line item, and what percentage of parents own property and are contributing to their children's education? Conversely, what percentage of property owners have children in school, yet bear the financial burden? Thanks again for the opportunity to express my thoughts and for your service in the demanding positions you hold." Blake Mabe in Abingdon. "I am very disappointed with the majority of our board of supervisors, including my representatives at large and in Abingdon. I cannot comprehend why the board of supervisors wants to ostracize and burden only the real estate owners to pay for wants for the county. It makes great sense to borrow the money for the fire and rescue departments with no increase in taxes. As I have stated many times, Parks and Recreation items are wants, not needs. Funding for parks should come mainly from the people that benefit from them. I suggest installing automated pay gates at the entrance of parks to see how important it is for citizens. Donation boxes for people to donate money for parks would be another good way for those who use the parks to fund them. The sports complex that magically appeared on the CIP list is for the schools and should come out of the 1% school sales tax that is already in place for them. Can the 1% tax not be used for the sports complex because it is existing and is not considered new? Please provide clarification. One of the line items on the CIP is the Woodville Park Office and Community Building for 2.2 million. Who are the users of the new office buildings, and for what purpose is an office needed at this park? If the Woodville Ball Field with restrooms and office buildings are for private organizations, then those entities should pay for them. Several of the board of supervisors say the voters will decide on the increase in real estate taxes, which on merit is a good thing, but many voters will be voting to take money from one group and not themselves. Using that logic, I would raise the vote to just tax the board of supervisors to pay the increased tax. It is taxing some of the betterment for, some for the betterment of all. Voters will not truly decide until, unless all tax pay, sorry. Voters will not truly decide until, unless all pay the tax, sorry. Everyone would have to pay a county sales tax, and a referendum that includes a tax that everyone has to pay is more fair and will get the citizens' attention and will increase the voter turnout immensely. Finally, the CIP list is non-transparent to the public. Items just seem to show up on the list that have not been previously scored for importance. The CIP line items that are placed on the list should have an explanation of why it is there and what the consequences are if not approved by the county."
Thank you, Ms. Tyler. Last opportunity. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on the Citizen Comment Period? All right, we'll close the Citizen Comment Period. We'll go back to matters presented by the board. Mr. Bazan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to bring up two items. For you pickleball users out there, want to plan to spend $1.9 million of Woodville Park to put water and sewer. I would venture to guess that you'd rather have pickleball courts back there as opposed to water and sewer lines going back to Woodville Park. So I have a problem with the way we're going to spend our capital money with respect to parks. And not only that, but to improve the hot dog stand down at the Gloucester Point, that's another time that we should wait to our later time to improve the Gloucester Point beach. I haven't heard complaints from any of my constituents if the beach is dilapidated or they can't use it. So as a board, we need to consider what we're spending our money for. So that's my pickleball pitch. I believe we can put a lot of pickleball courts in Woodville Park for a couple million bucks, don't you think? My second thing is going back to the smart meters. My wife, we just got back from vacation on Sunday, Monday, yesterday. Dominion Powers at my house without my permission installed one of these meters on my home. That meter happens to be right up against the wall against my master bedroom. These meters emit 40 times more radiation than your cell phones do. The American Cancer Society says, and this is right here, I pulled out some of the articles. They say that the RF frequency coming off these smart meters are possibly carcinogenic to humans. In addition, it is believed that the fires that occurred in Maui were because of fires started by these smart meters. And then lastly, we've got security concerns. If these meters are broadcasting radio signals to some point for Virginia Power, what's to say that someone couldn't hack into the system and then disrupt our entire grid? And disrupt our entire usage of electricity in this county or anywhere else that Dominion Powers is putting these smart meters in? So I'm going to try to opt out of this smart meter, and I wanted to come back and put that little wheel back in my house again, because I think that's a safer. And I would, I would suggest to everyone out there, and I'm sure the Gazette, you're out there, please print this. This is an important issue. These smart meters could be potentially dangerous to our citizens. So if you want a story, write a good story about that, but I doubt you'll put that in there. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bazan. We'll go to item 11G, discussion, decisional potential referendum for long-term financing. Mr. Wilmot, Ms. Steele.
Okay, I'll start it. So we are here to answer any questions that you have before consideration of resolutions that are in your packet. I know that our staff has worked closely with the county attorney staff and to try to capture different things that you all had requested. So as far as explaining the different projects and how there's three different resolutions that have different approaches to them. And again, I'm more than happy to answer anything related to the proposals as we've just been discussing.
Also, if I may, you have a couple versions of draft resolutions requesting a referendum. One of which is on page seven, one of which is on page nine.
And 11.
The one is on page 11. The attorneys recommend simpler and shorter, so that would be the one on page seven. He's already decided tentatively to include the estimated tax rate associated with the referendum-approved financing projects. Should they be approved? Of two cents. So you have that in page eight, on page seven, referendum petition, resolution. The page nine resolution draft is more specific and detailed with reference to the proposed projects. There's a risk. There's a risk associated with being that specific. One is it may constrain you to, to those projects and prevent you from completing projects which may fit in the general categories but don't fit in the specifics. Secondly, the wording on page ten is somewhat unwieldy. It's Faulkner-esque, it's, it's a sentence that goes on for fifteen lines. It's rather difficult. So that's really the main reason why the attorneys recommend against utilization of the resolution on page nine. If you, if you do decide to proceed with the resolution on page nine, I noticed that there was potential funding of lighting at Woodville Park, and I don't see that in the, in the description. So on the third to last line on page ten of number three, where it says, Woodville Park Water, comma, Sewer, I would add, comma, lighting, comma, bathrooms, because my understanding is that the spreadsheet I was provided with included potential funding of lighting at Woodville Park, so I would include that. And then it says bathrooms and building. Well, I would put and construction of a community use of building, not bathrooms and building, because that grammatically makes no sense. So if you're going to go with the one on page nine, which we recommend against because it's unwieldy, difficult to follow, and may constrain you to those projects while you may have emitted one or more, I would recommend you include that verbiage. The one on page eleven includes a rather lengthy whereas paragraph detailing the proposed projects, but doesn't alter the question. So it's somewhat of a compromise between the one on page seven and the one on page nine. You don't have to utilize any of those drafts, you can tweak them as you deem appropriate, provided you tweak them within permissible legal parameters. You also were provided with a draft general summary, and that's on page six. The Virginia Code allows the locality to provide a summary of the question posed at the referendum, should it be approved and conducted. And that would include a copy of the question and then a summary of that question of up to five hundred words. So Ms. Callaway and I worked on this proposed summary. It is, it needs to be objective, neutral, factual, so that to the best of our knowledge and belief, this summary of the referendum question is all of those things. But again, you are free to tweak it as you deem appropriate within legal parameters. So unless there are any questions, the ball is in your pickleball court.
Mr. Bazani.
So I'm, I'm in favor of ten because it, on page ten, which is more detailed, but I would like to make one change on the last penultimate sentence on part three. I would rather say, rather than strike out the word water, sewer, bathroom, and buildings for Woodville Park, I would say include Woodville Park pickleball courts and lights for that facility. Where else can we put, it's a central place, it's located in the center of the county, and I am sure citizens would love to have lighted pickleball courts there for their enjoyment. And so let's do that instead of spending two million dollars for water and sewer, which is not needed right there at Woodville Park. I know, Ms. Carol Steele, I know, Carol, you are in favor of that, but I'm, I'm totally against it. And it's going to enrich property owners with water and sewer going back there, there's, there's land back there that doesn't perk, and the moment you put water and sewer back there, those landowners will be enriched. Okay? So I would propose that we change the language to pickleball courts and lighting. We'll see which one of you would agree to that.
Mr. Chair, I won't say anything in common about that, but I did want to point out in case it hasn't been realized through previous materials that the Brown Park improvements includes pickleball courts. So, and it also includes water and sewer connection so that the restrooms can be built at the park there as well.
So I would make a motion then that we strike that language and insert pickleball courts and lighting on page of ten of the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
There you go. You got your answer.
Mr. Crisco.
Mr. Bazani, the ones that didn't give you the second there is I cannot support moving forward with the resolution that's going to take a look at no other stress factors on our economy where if this passes, it's an automatic, or it could be up to a two-cent burden to the taxpayer without any consideration of any other factor to our budget moving forward. So that's, that's why I didn't give you a second, sir.
Anyone else?
Doctor Or. A question for Mr. Wilmot. So in the spirit of the, these resolutions, you're suggesting that two and three are very difficult because they're unwieldy, long, and complicated? Is that what you're, you're intimating? That when a citizen, if these, if the referendum is approved by this board tonight, is that really something that you've seen before in terms of really long referendum?
I'm, I'm not, Dr. Orson, I'm not intimately familiar with referenda questions. I've seen a few. It strikes us as unwieldy and long. It's not illegal. You, you could pass any one of these three resolutions. And assuming the judge, Judge Shaw approves the question, I think you would, any of the three questions, then you're good to go. But the law does require that you provide a simple question in plain English, or a question in plain English. I don't think the word simple is used. And the question as worded is a hundred, two hundred words? I don't, I didn't count them. That's an awfully long question. And you have the general summary of the question, which details the proposed projects and the breakdown of the funding for those projects, which will be presented at the same time as the question at the polls. So there isn't much risk associated with paring the question down to make it more wielding. But that's really not a decision for me to make, and my recommendation is you go for the shorter, simpler, but I would have very little heartburn, no matter which one you picked.
So on page twelve, there, there was something also, this one here, that was on the package, that was short and simple.
Yes, sir, it just adds a whereas paragraph that basically includes the, the summary. So I think that's what it does. On page twelve, beginning at the top of the page, it inserts the summary. So it's part of the resolution.
Okay.
So it's, I, I view this somewhat of a compromise between the first and second draft resolutions.
One more question for Chair.
Mr. Bazani.
So, Mr. Wilmot, if the fire and rescue item is put in, is it put in? It is put in. And let's say this, this, people don't want that. They see the two cents and say, heck with it, I don't want any of this referendum. What happens to our fire and rescue capital improvement? We just defy the public and say, the heck with you, and just go ahead and build the fire and rescue departments, fire building?
Well, you would not be authorized to issue general obligation capital improvement bonds, but if you had the wherewithal, you could find a substitute funding source, which I understand from, if I heard correctly, Mr. Crisco, you may be able to find for the fire departments without issuing general obligation capital improvement bonds. There are other alternate funding mechanisms, some of which involve borrowing money and some of which don't.
So if we were not to have a referendum and just went ahead and put in the fire and rescue department's building, and then consider the other projects next year, we can do this without a tax increase, right? Mr. Crisco.
It's, it's my understanding that regardless of the referendum, we can do the borrowing next fall for the fire and rescue projects. So that's why I was like, well, let's do the referendum next year, but at the same time, I, I can't support the two cent. I would like to see, I, I could support a referendum with no tax increase this year, pull the fire departments out and do that borrowing when we have the capacity and fall of next year. That would take the overall project back down, I don't know what it is anymore, I'd have to pull up my Davenport, but I, I think we could do both with, without a tax increase or without levying ourselves a known tax increase without knowing what other pressures are going to present themselves during budget time of next year. I, I just can't support the two cent, knowing that natural growth may cause us to have to do that anyway to keep up with salaries, insurance, and everything else that we don't know yet because unfortunately, I'll look at Ms. Steele here, we're just getting into budget season. I mean, we just passed the budget, we're looking at this, and we're agreed and ready to open the door to budget season of next year. So me personally, that's, that's where I'm at, because I think that we can take option A, with the fire departments out of it, do that borrowing later, and do a, do a referendum where we're looking at those general obligation bonds for every other project on this list. I don't know if the fire departments count as one or two. Is that a one or two projects on the list at twelve?
It's one.
It's one, so, okay, so it'd be eleven other projects for the general obligation bonds, that we fund everything that we can with a zero percent tax increase, and I, I could do that, I could agree to that right now, but I just can't agree to two percent knowing, without, now knowing what else could, could come.
So what you're saying, if I may interject, Mr. Chair. So what you're saying, Mr. Crisco, and I agree with that, is that the two cents, if we raise taxes two cents, there may be some issues and economic conditions that may subsume that two cent increase for other things, emergency issues or, or whatever, if we have this two cents, two cent increase.
That, that two cent increase would be tied to this bond. So if there's other, other pressures, you're going to.
Additional tax, tax increases, thank you. Thank you.
Doctor, Mr. Gibson. Doctor. Doctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
They had a doctor first, Chris.
Yes.
First, regarding Mr. Bazani's motion, I, I would support pickleball at Woodville and at Brown Park. I've played the sport, I love the sport, I think we need courts in Gloucester. The, the reason I didn't second your motion, I would welcome your support on, on the referendum, I don't think I have it, but I think that water and sewer is a reasonable addition to Woodville Park because we've made so many improvements to the park through the fields, future lighting, this could be a facility for sports tournaments, we need public restrooms there. Right now, we don't, we don't have public restrooms. So that's, that's why I didn't second your motion, but I would certainly welcome your support of the motion, or of the referendum. I'm voting yes for the referendum, and my recommendation is the referendum that's contained on page nine and ten, in the resolution on nine and ten. And I know attorneys can disagree, and, and yes, the question that would be posed to the voters is lengthier than the other questions, but from my perspective, we need to be very transparent with the voters so that the voters know what they are voting for. And we also need to have as a board accountability so that if this is passed, that voters can say, this is what we voted for, we want you to fund it. My concern about the other two resolutions is that they are too vague, too general, and there is not enough accountability for, for the board. So that's why, if, if the board votes in a majority for a resolution, I, I would recommend the resolution on page nine. I, I do have some comments tonight, and I, I want to address some of the objections to the referendum that we've heard from fellow board members, from citizens, from, from, from all walks of life, because I think that that's part of the, the democratic debate. And I want to thank Ms. Carter for bringing the Virginia Constitution up, she's left. But, you know, I think it's important to be reminded of our constitution, and, and section two of the Bill of Rights in article one says, people, the source of power, that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people, that magistrates, us, are their trustees and servants, and at all times amenable to them. And that's what we're doing with this referendum, is we're giving power to the people of Gloucester County. And so I'm, I'm voting yes to let the people decide whether they would like to fund projects supporting public safety, our schools, and our parks. Now, the seven members of our board could choose on our own to incur debt or to adjust the tax rate, but for those of us voting yes on referendum, we're simply saying on this issue, because it's of such a magnitude, because it's twelve large projects, that we feel that the people should make this decision, that it's too important to be left to the decision of just seven people. And that, that's why I feel referendum is appropriate. And my question to my friends on the board who oppose putting a referendum on the ballot this November is, why do you fear the will of the people? Why do you fear giving the people of Gloucester a voice for their future on election day? What do we have to fear by letting people speak and let us know what they want? If they tell us they don't want this, then so be it, but let's give the people a choice. Because what I hear from opponents of this referendum sounds like the malaise of the late seventies. I hear fear, I hear pessimism, I hear a drumbeat of doom and gloom, a drumbeat of we can't do this, a drumbeat of no hope, no vision for the future. And so I, tonight, I want to address each of the objections that I keep hearing to this referendum. First, opponents of letting the people decide, they argue that the projects proposed amount to prioritizing wants, not needs. Yet the truth is that every one of these projects is listed on our capital improvement plan. They've been identified as needs, some for years, some for over a decade, but yet we've never had the political willpower to address them. And this gives the community the chance to make that choice. Other opponents say letting the people decide in a referendum would quote, max out the county's credit card. That simply is not true. Our chief financial officer has advised our board that if the people of Gloucester decide to fund these projects, that of our fifteen percent borrowing limit for sound financial policy, we would be only using barely over eight percent of our debt limit. That is far from maxing out our credit card, it's not even close. Opponents say a funding, say funding projects of this nature through a referendum, through a bond, is too risky. We don't know what the economy will do. The truth is, truth is that our advisors at Davenport and our financial officer have advised us that this is a low-risk financial tool used successfully by localities all over the state to fund needed projects. Plus, if the county faces any financial hardship in the future, this board has the safeguard to stop and pause the projects and not incur any further debt. We have the ability as a board to say, we are not financially able to do that this year if the economy turns out that way. To use a simple analogy, using bonds to fund county projects is like a home mortgage. You get to build the projects quickly, the community gets to enjoy those projects quickly, and you pay for them over the long haul, just like the young couple who wants to buy their first home and enjoy it for the next thirty years instead of renting for thirty years and hope they can afford a, a new home when, in their fifties. The opponents of letting the people decide state that funding these projects is not fiscally responsible. But yet they quickly forget that previous boards' short-sighted decisions based on fear and pessimism and endlessly kicking decisions down the road for that mythical better year in the future has consistently cost our county tens of millions of dollars and hurt our citizens' quality of life. The most glaring example of wasted taxpayer dollars is when the school board identified a new high school as a need in our county. Guess what the price tag was? Forty million dollars, a new high school. A new high school today costs one hundred and twenty million dollars. We're now only able to renovate half the high school for a cost of sixty million dollars. That's an eighty million dollar mistake. Eighty million dollars of our taxpayer dollars, all based on fear and delay and kicking the can down the road. Delaying needed projects is not fiscal responsibility. Delaying needed projects is not fiscal responsibility, it's wasting taxpayers' money. Page Middle School, you didn't build a baseball field to cut corners. Cost $200,000 at the time it was built, we delayed almost five years. The price tag was several hundred thousand dollars more because it was quote, "Fiscally irresponsible" to build a baseball field at a middle school. Again, wasting taxpayer dollars. But today, like clockwork, I hear the opponents of letting the people decide in a referendum that they want to kick 10 of the 12 projects down the road. Some five years, some 10 years, just like that $80 million high school mistake, just like the Page Middle School delays, if you kick these projects down the road, inevitably the rise in construction costs will cost our county, in the long run, millions and millions of wasted dollars. That is fiscal irresponsibility. Lastly, you will hear that opponents of letting the people vote on this important issue is that if the referendum passes, it will hurt retirees and people on fixed income. I have the highest respect for our retirees and people who are, have a tight budget on fixed incomes. But the truth is that opponents are neglecting to tell retirees and those on fixed income, fixed incomes, is that funding projects that promote public safety, excellent schools and great parks draws the young families to Gloucester, that we need to serve our retirees and those who are on fixed income. Retirees need doctors and nurses to care for their health. Retirees need police officers and firefighters to protect them. Retirees need business people to provide them goods, goods and services. Will the young family of the police officer, the young teacher family, the doctor who is looking to come to Riverside Hospital, what are they going to ask their realtor? What are the schools like? Do we have a safe community? What are the parks like? What can my kids do athletically, in recreation? This referendum gives the people of Gloucester County a choice to fund these projects that will benefit retirees and fixed income residents. I prefer the, the optimism and the confidence that have led all American great accomplishments and the optimism of a president like Ronald Reagan, who said, "The future doesn't belong to the faint-hearted, it belongs to the brave." We on the board who are voting yes for the referendum believe that free men and women can govern themselves wisely and make choices for their future. And the true essence of American freedom is letting the people of Gloucester County vote on their future, a future that promotes public safety, excellent schools and parks and rec. So, my question again to the opponents of this referendum is, why do you fear the voice of the people? Why do you want to prevent the people from having a voice in their future? I believe that we should let the people of Gloucester decide on their future, and that's why I'm voting yes, to put this referendum before voters and let them make a choice in November.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Yes. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I am also in favor of the page nine verbiage in this referendum. And I'm supporting this referendum and giving our citizens of Gloucester the opportunity to have their voices heard. While it's true we have been elected by them to hold these positions on the Board of Supervisors, it is also our duty and responsibility to ensure that we hear from our residents and allow them to weigh in on major decisions. And what better way to do this than to have this referendum? With this referendum, we won't just hear from a few, but I believe we'll hear from many. I believe that it will cause more citizens to go out to vote. Now, I understand, Mr. Crisco and Mr. Bazani are clearly not in favor of holding a referendum this election cycle in November. But I do not think that we as a board will be giving our citizenry enough credit by not including their feelings in such matters. After all, they've got their money. To not include them, you might as well be saying that you don't believe that Gloucester residents are intelligent enough, informed enough or care enough about Gloucester to be heard. Well, gentlemen, we are not God. We are men, men who hold these positions and are supposed to do what is the best for the people. Therefore, let the people speak, let the people vote, let the people be heard, and we can move forward with progress.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Crisco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I keep hearing that I'm opposed to the referendum. I have not said that I'm opposed to a referendum. I think that we have the ability to do this without a two-cent tax increase and pull the fire departments out of it and fund them through a different bond cycle. That's what I've said, that's what I've been continuing to say. Unfortunately, the number of voters outnumber, outnumber the, the number of real estate taxpayers in this community. That's, that's a, that's an issue for me. Unfortunately, you know, I've heard several board members mention that they feel like this is a mortgage. Well, when you get a mortgage, you sign that paperwork, you get your keys and you move into that house. This, right here, with everyone that, that's already been saying to be proposed tonight, there's a project or two that are going to take seven or eight years before they start. So, the mortgage analogies, analogy does not sit well with me. You know, some of this other stuff about Page Middle School and, and things, decisions that were made, this board set a, a dollar amount, the decisions at Page were, were out of our control. Lastly, I will say this, optimism does not put fuel in my gas tank, nor does it put food on my table, nor does it pay my power bills. So, that's why I have tried to get us to a point where we don't have to burden our citizens with a known increase. There are a couple of different ways around this. I would be happy with the referendum if it didn't automatically include a two-cent tax increase.
Mr. Bazani?
Let's be brief because I know we're going to lose this battle anyway. So, since I got elected to this board, now going on towards 11, 11 years, I've never, ever taken a cavalier attitude with the people's tax, tax money. And so, do I think that, that we, we increase taxes by two cents as a cavalier attitude? Probably, probably I think so. None of these other projects, except for the fire and rescue, are necessarily needs. They're more, they're wants, they're wants. And you have to consider when we're raising taxes, you're, you're taking taxes, you're taking money out of people's, my pocket, your pockets and their pockets out here to do projects that they may, or this county may not afford. If the economy turns down, there's, there's indicators out there that the economy, there may be a recession coming by the end of the year. If the feds keep raising interest rates to try to do their soft landing for inflation rates we're experiencing right now, we could be in dire straits and we could find ourselves not being able to make our payment obligations for these bonds we want to borrow. The comment for maxing out the credit card, it is, we are maxing out our ability to borrow. That's what we're doing with this referendum, if it, if it goes through. I, I never lived that way. I, I live within my means. I never, ever max out my credit card, even though my credit card, borrowing capacity is about $25,000, I never go beyond that. I always pay my credit cards off every month because I know that I can't afford to pay the interest, the 21% interest rates that are associated with that. So, I, we are maxing out our credit card, so I'll disagree, kindly disagree with Mr. Gibson's disagreement with me. So, we'll just agree to disagree as we said before, that's okay, that's okay. But I, I can't, I can't put our taxpayers at risk, that's what we're doing. Now, I don't have a, and, and I never said to the, the people can't decide. People should decide, they should decide. But the fire and rescue department, we don't need a referendum for that. We can just go ahead and do that and decide on the other things next year and move forward. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Ward. Mr. Hedrick?
As far as the words that would go on the, the ballot, the, on page 10 of the second resolution, I could support that although originally I had preferred that we consider the third option, which gave us a rather lengthy description in the resolution and a lot of detail into all of the items, which were not going to appear on the ballot. The ballot had a much shorter, more concise, easy to read wording that the citizens could, could read a lot faster on election day. However, having heard some support for the one on page nine and 10, I could also support that. I have a brief statement that I wanted to make.
Before you read that, can I say something?
Thank you, pardon.
Before you read that, can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm, I'm in favor, like Mr. Hedrick, of one on pages, starting on page 11, because it gives a complete description, but on the ballot, it'll just have the more concise information. But the ref, the resolution that we're passing has everything printed out and the timeline that it's done. And I think just for simplicity of the referendum itself, that would be, and I hate to agree with Mr. Wilmot, but I think that has the best of both worlds. But, hold on, I just wanted to say that before he got, Mr. Hed, hold on, Mr. Gibson, and then I'll get right back with you, I promise. It's a commercial break.
I, I think, just regarding that specific issue, my, my concern is we had this same issue with the sales tax referendum, where the wording of the ballot was different from the explanation, there was confusion. I think the ballot needs to be as clear and transparent as possible. That, that is, I, I think that the potential for conflict is great and that, that's why I support the other resolution.
Mr. Hedrick, excuse me.
I can go along with that. So, as most of you know, this is, I'm a one-termer, I said that coming in and I'll be leaving first of January. I'm pleased that during my term, that a referendum will be presented to the voters so they can decide up or down on the many needed and long-delayed capital improvements. After much consideration of the capital improvement options, I support option three or C, whichever it is, because it is affordable and will fund all of, all of the proposed projects while completing them much sooner. That also applies to the fire department, we'll get it in the spring instead of the fall. At no time during this borrowing will the debt limits be in issue. Even adding in the last $30 million of borrowing for the high school renovation, the debt service as a percentage of expenditures will peak at 8.05% of the 15% limit in FY '27, and it will decrease after that. And debt as a percentage of assessed value will peak at 1.8% of the 3% in FY '24 and decrease after that. I ask the voters to consider that option 1A, no tax increase, will not fund the sports complex for six more years and will not fully fund the project until 2031. The body tot renovation, which is here in my district, in our district, will not be started for over, up to nine more years. Additionally, school HVAC, Woodville Ball, Ball Field Lights and Brown Park will simply go unfunded for at least 10 more years. Thank you.
Mr. Bazani?
So, I, I'm not in favor of any of the referendums. If you were to make, Mr. Wilmot, you're going to word set 11, page 11. Why can't you bulletize these, put a little table in there to show the voters what they're voting for, as opposed to having them read a paragraph like this long? If you just made a, a, a table so they can see, okay, Woodville Park, this much, Brown Park, this much.
Because it has to be a question. And so, this is a question of very own.
Could you say, would you, would you be willing to, would you be willing to pay two cents for the following items and put a table underneath it?
There are lots of ways to do it, you have three.
Mr. Mis, but Mr. Bazani, the one on page 11 that you're referring to is-
I go cross-eyed looking at this thing.
That's just the synopsis of what's being voted on. The actual, what would be on the ballot is, shall the county of Gloucester, Virginia contract a debt through general obligation capital improvements? That's what would be on the ballot, not the whole part. Whereas, on the second one, what would be on the ballot would be everything listed That's where the difference is.
But in one paragraph, Mr. Chair, you're going to list it out in one paragraph for them to read?
Which, what are you saying?
You're saying you have three options, page nine, 10 and 11.
Seven, nine and 11.
Seven, nine and 11. 11 has this giant paragraph there.
That is not on the ballot.
I'm sorry, you may have misunderstood.
Only the part, the part that would be on the ballot is number three of each of these.
Number three.
Correct, Mr. Wilmot?
Yes, sir. So, the first version on page seven doesn't have all the specifics in the resolution or the question, but has it in the general summary?
Page eight.
Page eight, well, it starts on seven, doesn't it? So, the one on page, not starting on page nine, has the specifics in the summary and in the question. And the one that starts on page 11 has the specifics in the general sum, summary and in one of the whereas paragraphs of the resolution, but not in the question.
So, then, if you're going to do that, then why can't you take paragraph three of page nine and, and put a table in there so that the people can quickly go through the tables like, this is what I'm voting for, this is what it's going to cost for two cents?
I could have come up with 20 more versions, Mr. Bazani, I came up with three.
You, you don't think that-
But you're not in favor of any of them.
I, I know, but I'm just looking, I'm looking at, I would, I would, I'm sorry to say, but if my, one of my students wrote this in one paragraph, I, I wouldn't give him credit for it because it's hard to understand.
Neither would I.
Okay. So, why can't we bulletize it or put it in a table?
Five of you can do almost anything either.
Okay.
Dr. Ward?
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
I quit.
So, everyone's been, been making a statement, I guess it's my turn to add my, my thoughts to this, to this. So, as you all know, this has been my family vacation week and I've been in Outer Banks for the last two days battling my grandson for the number of waves that we catch. So, when I go back tomorrow, he's going to tell me, "Pop JJ, I've caught more waves than you have." However, I came back for this meeting tonight because I want the people to hear, me personally, how I vote. I thought it was that important to drive back for the meeting tonight and I go back tomorrow so that I can face my grandson and go back to battling him the number of waves we catch body serving. But given that, a few points that I wanted to make to express my appreciation first to the board, you know, over the last, I don't know how many months, we've been discussing, battling, discussing, and in front of the public. The public has seen us discussing in detail about the aspects of borrowing, what it means to the citizens, and we've gone back and forth. But I think it's been good for the citizens to see this. It's been very good and I, I've enjoyed it. And I very much appreciate the opinions of all of the board. It's made me think carefully about where I stand on this budget, and that's what I did over the last couple of days when I got up and watched the sun, sunrise and put my thoughts on paper. But I do want to say thank you for a very engaging conversation, it was great. The other, I would like to thank the efforts of Davenport and our county administrator and her, and her staff. I think they've done a wonderful job in proposing a lot of options to us and, you know, fine-tuning this to where I think the borrowing can be done in a way that I think will minimize the impact on the citizens. And no one knows what the economy is going to be like. Ever since COVID, we've always been doom and gloom. And Gloucester, I think, has been, you know, done pretty well since then. But I think that what we've seen with our county staff in developing proposals that keeps the impact as minimal as possible is pretty impressive. So, with that said, I'm going to support the referendum for the following reasons. First, the board has made many important decisions affecting our county and rarely do we ask citizens for their input. In this referendum, and as Mr. Bazani said, we've been on the board for a long time and we've made a lot of decisions because we think that we have a better handle on what is important for the county because we get a lot more detail. But here, we're giving the citizens an opportunity to tell us what they think about this decision. And I think we want to hear the citizens on this very- And I think we want to hear the citizens on this very important decision to move forward on a number of CIP projects that will affect directly and indirectly all of our citizens. I think Mr. Gibson said it correctly, that there are a lot of things that we want to do that I think are going to have a big impact on the economy in a very positive way. And we've seen that in our sales tax revenue and our real estate revenue, not real estate, our, our food tax revenue. And I think that's going to improve markedly when we make these improvements of these projects. I feel this is going to be a very unique opportunity for our citizens and just like the board, we're going to hear a wide spectrum of opinions on this topic. But again, here we are giving our citizens that opportunity. You know, we'll get calls and we'll see, you know, people on the street and they'll either pat us on the back or say some other words that we may not like. But that's, that's why we got elected. I think if the referendum is improved, I believe the economy is going to dictate when and how we move forward each of these state of projects. Mr. Gibson stated that very aptly and I don't need to repeat that. But, you know, I do believe Gloucester's economy will continue to do well in the coming years and I could be wrong, but we've seen, you know, some dramatic improvements in our sales tax revenues and our meals tax despite the concerns about the economy on a national level. And we all are concerned. And I, the one thing I do appreciate about the board, we are all very conservative about spending. Each one of us has a, a way to really deal with what we see as something that's going to affect the citizens, but we don't know. And as our county administrator has said, we're only going to borrow the money as needed for the state of projects, which in turn, maybe, it may not take a tax reason, but we have to state that in this referendum. Only time's going to tell and I think, you know, this is a very, very unique opportunity for the county. But again, I want to thank the board for, you know, many months of good discussions and I know when we walk out of here, we're going to shake hands and pat each other on the back and we'll still be friends. And that's what I like about this board.
Exactly right.
It's really good. So those are my, and tomorrow I go back battling my grandson for how many waves will we catch body surfing.
Anyone else like to make a statement, comment?
I was waiting for y'all.
I'm in favor of it. I think, somebody said earlier about losers. I think if the county improves, we get the items that are needed in the county, the county will be, everyone in the county will be winners. It's, we're giving the citizens of the county an opportunity to vote on something. I'm not going to say it as eloquently as they did, but if you look at it, there's a lot that needs to be done and we have not done things in a timely manner before. Mr. Crisco, Dr. Orth, and I were on when the whole issue first started with page and, you know, it's been a crazy time. So, you know, that's, I've got a feeling that they're going to demolish the new page building and they're still going to be talking about what they could have done at the page site. So, you know, history. But if you look at what we have opportunity of doing right now, we have the opportunity of utilizing a lot of the things immediately or very near immediate that it would take us years if we ever had the fortitude as a board to actually try to fund. So I'm in favor of it. As I said, I'm more in favor of just because of verbiage and I understand where everybody's coming from with that, that statement on three on page 10, it's a hard read. I think that if the citizens are truly paying attention to it and reading it and you use good grammar, you'll be able to understand, just like the other referendum, what it should be used for.
Mr. Gibson.
Mr. Chair, I'd move adoption of the resolution on page nine with two amendments. On page 10, adding the word lighting after sewer, comma, and inserting the words, construction of a community use preceding the word building in the second of the last line in paragraph three.
A second, Mr. Chair.
Y'all got to add that comma behind bathrooms too, or else Mr. Wilmot would...
And, and Mr. Crisco's suggestion?
Mr. Crisco, despite all this, I like your sense of humor. Thank you.
And with the addition of the Crisco comma after bathrooms.
Yes! I'm famous. Thank you, Ken.
So you're going to vote on it?
I'm still voting against it.
Okay. You got your comma.
Well, no. And I'll tell you why. I'll, I'll tell you afterwards.
Okay. There's a motion and a second?
I'll tell you now. Just I can have to comment.
That's what I was getting ready to say.
And the only reason I'm voting against it is because of the two-cent piece. I think there's a way around doing that and I still think we would have to have the refer, well, we'd still have to have the referendum and I don't care what year happens, but I think there's a way around it and a way that we could do this without putting that burden up front. The only reason I'm voting against it.
And I would agree with Mr. Crisco.
Well, I mean, I look at it multiple reasons. Yes, it would get, we could conceivably get it done in the future. There's multiple reasons. A, as we've, you've alluded to, we've all said before, we don't have to have a referendum for these projects. We could sit there as a board and vote on them. I think it's very important that the citizens of Gloucester County look at it and see if that's truly what they want. And that's why the referendum is a strong point. If, I mean, right now, five, if five could say, okay, we just want to do our next year, have a 2% tax increase and we're going to start funding this, and I'd have a referendum. But this gives the citizens an opportunity to do it and that's the reason that I'm for it. By doing this and with the referendum, if it passes, when it passes, we'll be able to start the fire department in the spring versus the fall to move that up because of the way the funding would work. So there's multiple reasons for this.
Mr. Crisco.
All I was saying though, and I probably didn't say it correctly, was there are projects, and I think the fire departments is around 13 to 14 million. So what I was thinking is we could have found some other projects that we aren't going to fund until down the road and move that to the fall, leave the fire departments in the referendum at zero tax increase this year, start those in the spring, then borrow the other $14 million next fall when we have that capacity to borrow that $14 million and use it for a different project. Just, I mean, we have a list of 12 projects. That's, that's what I'm saying is we could have done is just said, the fire departments stay in, or that, that amount of money stays in and then we, we figure out the other projects and borrow that money next fall when that capacity appears and we go down the road. We don't have to worry about the tax increase unless it comes from other external pressures. That's all I was trying to say.
Well, I mean, we, fortunately, if the economy would unfortunately, should use fortunately both, we have the ability if the economy takes an unfortunate turn, that we don't do any of this. This is not set in stone. What this does is gives us the opportunity to do it in the event that the economy stays where it is.
Been in government too long to know that if the people tell me to borrow money, we're borrowing the money.
Well, okay. All right, Ms. Steele, would you like to poll the board?
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes. I don't like the verbiage. I don't like the verbiage.
Mr. Crisco?
No.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
No, and I still don't like the verbiage.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's done. Ms. Steele, in reference to this, I know you were going to work on potentially getting a draft together for the information. How is that going? I know we weren't expecting it until September.
So we pushed hard and we're, we've made a lot of progress. We have sent a draft to the county attorney's office and we're, be working with him to make sure that the verbiage is correct, that it's not slanted or biased in, in any way. So what I wanted to do tonight was to give you sort of a, a blank copy and discuss about the format for the education because that's going to require some costs which we can cover. So I'm going to pass around and if there's, since we didn't put a screen, just so anybody sees, it's a blank document as far as all the text has been removed, but this way you would understand the format is that it is a, an 11 by 17 tri-fold brochure. And on the back, it includes our nonprofit bulk rate stamp. And our recommendation is that once the verbiage is approved, that this mailer go out to every household, just like the Beehive has done in the past. And the funding for that, we actually have that because of the fact that we changed the Beehive mailing. The cost for printing enough copies as well as having overrun is almost $2,400 and the cost to mail them, as again we've done with the post office, is $3,700. So rounding up, it's $6,250 would get this first educational piece out to every household. And when it's approved...
We have to approve it in September.
So then what we would be doing is taking the same information and putting it on the website. In addition to that, as it says, you know, it says it'll be a QR code and we're trying to do this so that for low-tech people as well as high-tech people, we will be putting announcements of different town hall meetings or like, I've already been asked to speak at one community meeting, actually three community meetings, that we're talking, you know, to one specific if the referendum, the other were what's going on in the community kind of thing. So it's a perfect timing to talk to these groups from church and things. So I think it's an economical way and then we would push the social media, push the presentation and other educational forums and can update other kinds of documents. Another example of that is if you look in the middle and you see the picture of the sports complex, and if you watched and followed the school board meeting, they were very clear about not wanting people to think the sports complex is the football field. And so it shows, and this is a little bit cut off, and so the other final would show that the tennis courts are projected to move to the front where the current driving range is. So the sports complex sort of, almost is like a whole L-shaped. Additional detailed information, that's way too much to send out and overload people with, could be put on the website. So that's, that would be the proposal, just to show you kind of as far as, this is the, the draft, we're looking at the quantity of ink, that hopefully it's not too overwhelming. And one of the things that we think will, if, if it passes muster with the county attorney is showing, if I vote yes, how much will my tax increase would be. And we know that there are people who own land who don't have structures or they may have a low-costing structure that's valued, I mean. So it goes from $100,000 to $700,000 and shows what the monthly increase would be with a two-cent tax increase. So I'm, I'm very pleased that we were able to pull this out and draft and look forward to working with the county attorney to make it all smooth up.
All right. Dr. Orth?
Yeah, quick question. So when you have this mailer ready to go and you go to the post office, can someone deliver these to each of the post offices so they all get it on time rather than wait for the mail to get to the post office? I know that's the way, because that journal does it. And I know when I was involved in fund drives for the fire, the rescue squad and the sports complex back in the 90s, I personally took the mailers to the individual post offices.
I'm sure we can make those arrangements.
Quentin's shaking his head, yes. He said he wants to eat in different spots in the county anyway. All right.
I've got one question.
Mr. Crisco.
From approval, I'm assuming September 5th meeting, how quickly can we get this turned around and out the door?
Well, I think that, I talked with Ms. Steele today, I think it's going to be how soon, if it passes muster with the county attorney, whatever staff comes up with passes muster with county attorney, if the board has no issue with what's being done, it could go out relatively quick right after that.
Yeah, I, we can, we will get this to you electronically as soon as it's ready to go so that you would have time to read it and not be sitting in a meeting trying to read.
Right, just because, because the voting starts September 20, 20, starts early voting. So that's why I was just making sure we could get this out in enough time.
Yeah.
Yeah, September 22nd. In fact, it's right on here. That's straight off of the registrar's office, so.
Can she finish?
He's got that.
Well, I had a couple other items I wanted to talk about tonight.
He needs to recuperate and rest up for the competition tomorrow.
You old fart, you'll be, you'll be okay.
Gosh.
Come on, what's...
I'm, I'm 10...
For the good of the county and the good of the Commonwealth, let's just keep talking.
I'm 10, I'm 10 waves ahead of him as of yesterday.
You were.
I was.
Okay, is there anything else we'd like to talk about tonight?
Yeah, one more thing, Mr. Chair.
Oh.
And it's with, with agreement, consensus that you good, good gentlemen. I talked about the smart meters. I would like Dominion Power to come in and speak to us about these smart meters. I, I want to know what safety issues they, that we might have on these meters because they are, from what I've read, and I've got this literature and I'll share it with you, I'll make copies and share it with all of you. You can go look it up on Google. Google it. You can see that these things are not safe. They're not safe and they can spontaneously catch on fire. And I'll guarantee if one of those things blows my house up and Dominion Power says, I'm not responsible because this, you know, it's not something that I caused, I will sue. So can we get Dominion Power to come out and speak to us? And I'm not looking for a flag says, yeah, this is great, because I'm, I'm, for security reasons, somebody can manipulate that RF, RF frequency and, and do something to this county and shut off electricity to everyone's house. I'm, I'm just apprehensive of anything going through the air where someone can hack into it and shut it down. Thank you.
I definitely can make the contact with Crystal.
Yep.
Bright. I was like, I knew it was a name that was fitting for her job. Crystal Bright from Dominion Energy.
All right, now, Dr. Orth, would you like to make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meet in the journal.